Trustees, it's called to order. The presence of a quorum have been established. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Now we have public participation. We are now at the scheduled time in our agenda for public comment. The Board wishes to hear your thoughts and concerns. As per Board policy, all speakers must have submitted a speaker participation form at least 10 minutes prior to the start of our regular session. All registered speakers should have received a card with guidelines for your presentation. We also ask those in audience to refrain from responding to the speaker's comments, including cheering and applauding. This will enable the Board members to focus their attention entirely on the speaker. Although the Board may ask clarifying questions, please be reminded that the Board members cannot respond to any comments. Tonight, we have one individual signed up to speak. Leslie Duran. Is that part of that side correctly? Come on down.
Quick question, is it just three minutes? Or do I get five?
Three.
Three?
Yes ma'am. Can you pull it down? I was gonna say so we can hear you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Leslie Duran, and I am here tonight as a Tyler ISD parent. I want to speak to you tonight about the fear and uncertainty many Hispanic and Latino families in our community are experiencing. With ICE agents active in our neighborhoods, parents are afraid to leave their homes. Some are afraid to bring their children to school, and many students are worried they may not see their parents at the end of the day. Despite this, our PTA parents and community members are stepping up by providing rights, collecting food, and doing everything they can to support our families. But they should not have to do this alone. Families should feel the support of their school district. So I ask you today, what is Tyler ISD doing to ensure the safety and well-being of our children during this time? Before you answer that, I want to remind you of who you serve. Tyler ISD is the largest school district in Northeast Texas, serving over 18,000 students. District demographics show that 48.30% of your students are Hispanic. That's nearly half of your school district. Across campuses, the Hispanic population is very significant. For example, Verdua, 89.8 of their students are Hispanic or Latino. Bonner, 76.1. Douglas, 84%. Griffin, 68.4. Austin, 58.3. Orr, 61.2. Pete, 51.6. Ramey, 65%. Bolter, 60.9%. Moore Middle School, 72.8. Tyler High, 67.2. Early College, 63.5. These are not isolated pockets of students. This is a district-wide reality. These are your students, your families, and the community that placed you in those seats to serve them. Tyler ISD's core beliefs state that schools and communities have an enormous impact on students' lives and that the district has a responsibility to collaborate with the community to achieve excellence. Your core beliefs emphasize equity, safety, and supporting all students. I am asking you to act in alignment with those values. So I ask again, what resources and support is the district providing to ensure our students feel safe and supported? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have in continuous improvement student outcomes.
Chief Innovation Officer, Dr. Bobby Markle, will be making his way to the table. He's got a presentation here for our Evergreen Strategic Initiatives to give you all an update on some of the next is now things that we've got going on and maybe what the future holds as we gain some momentum and even for preparation already for the 2627 school year. Dr. Markle?
All right. Well, thank you President Atkins, School Board, and Dr. Crawford for allowing me this opportunity to update you on something I think is really exciting. But like we just stated, is maybe a little bit of a delayed gratitude because we are looking things like 2627 and some of these concepts. So to jump right into it, Evergreen ETX, we used it as a code name early on just because we wanted to really put some beef behind it. But we've got some really great strategies that are going to be aligned to this initiative. The first one is 1882 partnerships. These are our ability to utilize additional fundings from the state to either innovate or turn around, in this case innovate, school designs to hopefully support what we want to see kids experience in the future as we think about next is now. Currently, I'm going to jump ahead to the third slide to come back to this slide. We are underneath a call for quality schools, which I'll address in a minute, but that's going to outline the partnership that we will be getting into an agreement with. As of today, we do have a letter of intent from a higher education partner that we will vet through the process to hopefully bring you something in January to vote on as a partnership agreement for 2627. Another initiative is the Grow Your Own. As we've stated across the district in multiple talks, but also here at the DICE, that we want to really be ahead of teacher preparation, making sure that we're getting quality teachers in front of students. And the best way to do that is to promote the next generation of educators. And so the goal of this Grow Your Own has multiple inputs to get to one output, having the best teaching staff in this area for Tyler ISD students. So that's going to start as early as the K-12 experience. Again, not a whole lot officially behind these things yet. It's things we're working on. But the goal would be that a student would have the opportunity to participate, whether it be through a dual credit pathway, a CTC pathway, joining a professional organization to really promote being a part of the education field. The goal then would be that they would go to school, they'd officially become enrolled in a college of education, to then hopefully get their teaching certification, and with some incentives and different, what I think are exciting ways to really harness these kids, bring them back to our district in order to serve the next generation of students. And last but not least is the Evergreen Systems of Excellence. And so as we think about schools that really need that other boost, we've tried a lot of things and we've got some momentum, how else can we put the accelerator on? We are looking at models that might not look like what we do now, but are really intended to make sure that these students get every opportunity to be at the highest academic achievement school we can create. But sometimes you kind of have to take a step back and say, is what we're doing getting us beat, i.e. tradition? And so these are very strategic schools. It is not a district-wide initiative necessarily, but it is a part of our overall concept of trying to get our district to be Evergreen, which is basically here, legacy, sustainability. That's where the Evergreen comes from. Some exciting things we've done so far this semester is we've visited multiple school districts and school systems. You can see some of those highlighted here. Denton ISD, we went and visited there. Grow Your Own, it is a fantastic program that they've taken about six years to really develop. And the cornerstone of that is the TAFI Organization, which is Teachers, Texas Association of Future Educators. They really have a lot of buy-ins. Starting as early as third grade, kids begin to see themselves as educators. They actually do read alouds, they actually do running records with kids. And so it's not just a, this would be fun, this is real practice happening. In Houston Independent School District, we did go see some of their quality schools underneath their NES program. And we're going back to Houston later this month, say later this month, it'll be first of next month, which is December, to again revisit some middle schools because we only got to see the elementary version of that. In San Antonio, we saw another 1882 partnership through UTSA, a higher education partner with their dual language programs. And so we really learned a lot alongside some of our potential partners and how that might look. Third Futures, similar to NES, they run a model that is really instructionally focused. It strips down a lot of other things to make sure that instruction time is not lost and that kids have the opportunity for what they call AT-Bats. A little bit different model than we do theory of action, but I think something that could benefit our students. We just had some visits to Lubbock ISD. I did not go on that visit, so I can't speak exactly to that, but it's very similar to our Houston visits underneath the school, Systems of Great Schools. This grant programming that we started a couple of years ago that we're going to continue to foster. And then if, looking ahead, Wichita Falls is also utilizing Third Futures, and so we'll be visiting them because this is their first year of implementation. The main thing we wanted to capture in all of these is our efforts to see who we can become through the lens of some other really successful programs and districts. And it's been a really, really great experience. And then some next steps. So currently, we are working on Lasso Grants. One of my counterparts, Dr. Cassandra Chapa, is in the back. She is working diligently to make sure that we apply for the grants that are going to align to these Evergreen projects. We did call for our quality schools. Officially, that'll be over this Friday is when it's due. And then they, those individuals that have to submit a local campus partner application in which we will interview them and go through a vetting process so that hopefully in January we will present an 1882 partner that we believe you will be proud of. And then that way, we can officially submit for a Texas Partnership Benefits application at the end of January. And with that said, any questions?
Before you ask those questions, Lasso stands for Learning Acceleration Support Opportunities. Those are obviously TEA managed. A lot of the dollars that are considered each legislative section, session, instead of going to the basic allotment to individual school districts have all been going towards the Texas Education Agency for these grants and allotment opportunities for us to participate with. And so they do fit what we're trying to do. And so application for those things, even though we've been doing some of those for the last couple, three years, they're starting to ramp up even more. And so we're excited about investigating those and bringing those back to you.
Question, regarding the grants?
Yeah.
Are those state or federal grants or independent?
They're state grants. There is some federal dollars that are allocated back towards the state that are state managed that come from DOE. But a lot of this comes from legislative sessions to where they actually craft the money, send it towards TEA for some of the reforms and initiatives that Commissioner Murath has at the top of his list. But most of them, I'd say probably 90, 10 are state and federal?
I would say about three out of the 11 opportunities are federal.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
They're that many?
It's all this collection.
Yeah. Okay. Just under 30%. Okay.
Okay. Wish, oh. Grow Your Own, I know we have a similar program. If it's, are we looking at targeting, I think our Grow Your Own now, look at our current teachers or something, or are we looking at high school students?
Yeah, so we've, we've got some paraprofessionals that we've reported here about how many have actually gone through and finished on, they get their bachelor's and then certification. That's one of the Grow Your Own. This is more of a grassroots type of thing to where you're going to start talking about early years of getting kids excited about teaching. There's going to be that strategy. There's also going to be the strategy of looking at maybe your early college, high school students that are actually already getting college credits, that are already an associates of education or associates in education. We saw one today. I actually saw two today that raised their hand about the, them wanting to be an educator. And again, these are, we got to wait for our higher ed partner to come alongside what we want to do, or what our vision is. But the thought on that is, is that the typical, go get your bachelor's in education. You pay for your own student teaching and spending all that time of doing observable hours and your student teaching like a lot of us, well, I didn't have to, but some of y'all did, that that could actually be intertwined with some of our needs as far as teacher shortages go, classroom sizes go at some of our higher need schools. And while they're doing that, actually be a part of a fellowship of name and title to be determined, to where they actually get stipends to do such. And so obviously, there's a recruitment piece to that, but then there's also the finance piece to that that might make it attractive to, for individuals to actually go forward to actually start that process. So yeah, it's totally different strategies.
Okay, sound like it's an expansion of what we already had into other areas.
Sure, that's correct.
Right, okay.
Ms. Osaya?
Thank you, Madam President. On the Grow Your Own Initiative and mentoring, will it be structured like a teachers academy, like what they had in Fort Worth ISD and in Denton where it, not only the, obviously the early grades, you're trying to funnel them into education, even in high school, you're trying to get an associates of education, but then the coming back and teaching with us as far as their teacher internship, paid for teachers internships? Because I think the research shows us that if you have the paid for internship, internship, if I can speak today, with the district, you're more likely to stay with that district. So is that component of it going to be there?
Yeah, so similar to what we do with Team One right now, as far as trying to make sure that our administrator pool, administrative pool is as diverse as we need it to be. We've been doing that now for eight years or so, I believe. I think we're on Team 1.8. Okay, so part of that structure is that if we agree to pay for your masters, then contractually speaking, you have to give us three years post your masters. Same thing here on this as well, is designing those contracts, designing those experiences to say that you, once, if we, if we do provide some support financially for you to go get your teacher certification, that you do stick with us. And then there's the natural effort in trying to make sure that they've got good rapport within your, within your staff, and they feel good about where they're working and that they want to stay here as well. Yes, sir, you're on that. And I'll say this, if you remember, or you recall, the Houston model, to where they had the structure similar to a Third Future, those of y'all that actually went to those two models, to where you had, what was an apprentice teacher inside of a classroom, and then you had a novice teacher inside of the classroom, then you had an expert teacher inside of a classroom. And those are stratified and structured and compensated via hospital model, right, to where the expert teacher was compensated more like a surgeon, et cetera, et cetera. Those are the types of things that we're talking about doing. We think certainly there'll be a capacity that we can, we won't be able to do this district-wide, but we do think we'll be able to get some momentum using some of the early college and even some UT Tyler partnerships that we've got that are waiting to be announced and in the wings in regard to that.
On, on the teachers, Grow Your Own deal, we've seen examples in our district now of kids that have been in the school, that have graduated, that are even principals now in our schools, that are good principals and good teachers. Most of those happened because they were interested in education for some reason. We put an emphasis on certain things, like with TJC, is there a way to look at their associate's degree program? They have a baccalaureate degree program as well. They're allowed to issue up the five different baccalaureate deals. Have we looked at that and said with one of those, do they have an associate's of education? Do they have an interest in doing because? And then even more specifically in the bilingual areas, because we struggle to get teachers, period, but we really struggle to get bilingual teachers or math teachers or science teachers. Is there a way for us to get with whoever the partnership institution is? I know we already have one with TJC on early college, high school, but and see if there's a way for us to focus in those areas that we need?
Yeah, I think those conversations have been had, Dr. Markle, and, and your interactions with potential higher ed partners, those are, the high, the high need focus areas are certainly that that's something at the top of the list, correct?
Absolutely. One of the interests we have, and you can go look at the call for quality schools, so I can speak to the models that we are asking our higher ed partner to support, one of them being a education lab school. So a school where clinical teachers, a part of Grow Your Own, hopefully, kids who've gone up our system now are enrolled in that higher ed partner, could then come to our clinical schools, that it's a lot more concentrated and almost a family feel to it, that you're a part of something, not just, hey, we're going to, we're going to let you go wherever you want to go, your third and phase three, phase four. To answer that question, TJC, that is the associate's pathway that currently early college, high school utilizes. So they will get at least their two years of that. And then there is a direct pathway into some other higher ed, specifically UT Tyler has that opportunity for them. And part of the models that we're looking ahead on, that would be teacher prep schools, one of them would be a bilingual school, similar to UTSA models, which means whoever our higher ed partner, they would clearly understand, we have some expectations of what we would like to see, to get certifications that we know we're limiting. And one of them would be bilingual, as a lot of others. When you start getting down that path, you've got arts, you've got secondary, there's a lot of need. But I do think the higher ed partner that agrees to this is going to be very open to the future of what we, what we are going to work together to create.
On the, just a little more than I'll let you go, on the Evergreen System of Excellence, I know that the stuff that we've seen in Houston, I know which bucket that falls under, I'm assuming it's that one. The 1882 projects would be the other things we've looked at. And then the Grow Your Own deal would be more like in line with the teachers academy. Tell me a little bit about the 1882 partnerships. I've talked to the soup, we've, we've talked about some kind of general things, but can you give me a little more detail on what you're looking at there? Not names of schools, not anything like that?
So, yes, so there's three specific models in our call for school, school 1882 partnership. One of them is a clinical lab school for a higher ed partner. So again, where that school would be utilized for the majority of clinical students that are going to come out and do that work in addition to residency students. So he did speak to that a minute ago. These are students that instead of just being maybe one semester here, one semester here, their commitment would be that entire year, and in that residency, they would be paid to do that. And so there's the incentive to be a part of our program because we will pay you during that time. The second one is a K-2 literacy model lab school, where we take that higher ed partner's resources and supports and really try to elevate possibly a traditionally, a school that traditionally literacy is behind the curve, or we really just want to establish a space in our district that literacy is a high level focus. We look at some really dynamic, innovative ways to address students and maybe where they're coming from and what are those gaps that they need, including the potential for a possible year-long experience would be in that model as well. And then last but not least, I know that Dr. Crawford has spoken to this many times, is a biomedical tech lab school. A school that is going to be a part of a higher education partnership that would give us a pipeline of students who not only see themselves in the medical field, but are supported by the network of great higher ed, but also medical institutions we have, specifically UT Health and Christus. So those are in the call for schools. And what 1882 allows us to do is we will still operate the schools from certain vantage points like transportation, finance, curriculum, instruction. The higher ed runs the school, runs the system from an executive director point of view that is, they are responsible to a board that is in the higher education partnership. And then they basically execute what we're asking that partnership to give to us. So technically, when that happens, my job will transfer over to more of a conservator of that relationship to ensure, A, that partnership does what we asked them to do in the agreement that we made, and then really evaluate the quality of that partnership. So that's really how 1882 is structured.
So it's the stuff they're doing in Longview, but Longview's doing it almost over the whole district. We're doing it in a very specific school or area.
Yes, sir.
On the 1882 partnership, the board is responsible for oversight, kind of like we are. They have the executive director, which would come from whoever our partnership institution was. I'm under the understanding that we appoint that board, is that correct? Is that different? I know if we plug into a system, we don't.
That would be, that would be a collaborative work between whoever our higher ed partner would be and y'all.
So it'd be a...
And how we, and how we design the charter, the specificity of how many people sit on that board, whether it be three, five, or seven, or nine, or 15, or however many y'all want. I'm just kidding. So I, I think obviously a micro board would be something that would certainly handle that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Markle.
If y'all are interested on that, underneath, underneath menu on our website, about us, call for schools, all of that, our call for quality schools is on there as well. One thing you did mention a little bit about was ADZ, Additionals Day School Year, is part of an acronym that they've come up with at, at TEA for additional funding. We actually could potentially get some ADZ dollars for things like summer school and mentoring alliance, is that correct, Mrs. Russell? Okay, good. But then obviously, that if you were going to adopt a year-round calendar, both years would be an example, or something else innovative to where we know we need more time with the curricula, or less frequent breaks with the curriculum, that those designs of those schools, these lab schools we're talking about, or even some reform models, that will be something that we'll be bringing to y'all for consideration as well. So again, it takes a little time to get to these things. And also, it's good for us because we get to do this and we don't have to do it, unlike some districts that have had, had to rush into this. I think Wichita Falls, I think, had to actually choose to go to Third Future, I think, as late as June or July
Yep.
of last year. And they put that together and Third Future, I think, even told some of y'all that they were able to hire three or four staff persons to bring in there just so that they could actually insert, you know, have some model teachers in there as well. So yeah, ADZ is a thing that's going to be coming down the pipe as well. There's also a, like a year one and a year two, that if we were going to completely redesign a school, because we want to get that one where we want it to be, then you're going to talk about us funding year one of that. Am I getting some head shakes there?
Yes, sir.
And getting all the things in place because they call that a res, no, what are they?
Resource designation.
A resource designation. You have to have year one on your own to show the commitment that you want to do it here, which would make sense for us, so that in year two, you could apply for the resource alloc, allotment from TEA. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Just quickly, and on the timeframe, kind of a timeline on this, you guys think all three of these moving parts are feasible for start of next school year? The teachers academy, the Evergreen, the 1882 projects?
I will say that the resource school that I just mentioned is probably priority number one. But these other models may not be able to be fully implemented in year, in year one, but I think that we'll be able to make some progress towards soft implementation year one. I mean, that's, that's, it's really going to depend upon our higher ed partner and what their capacity is. And interest in your Grow Your Own stuff as well. But as far as the early literacy model lab school, that, that could be a, a thing right away, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's going to be immediate things in all of this. It's just how we get to the end goal and those dates will really have a lot to do with the higher ed partner that we get in association with.
Thanks. My charge, last comment, my charge to Dr. Markle was that if we had to do one thing, it was going to be to make sure that if we have any resource allotment, am I saying that right?
Keep going.
Yeah. Schools, that that is priority one, that is year one. Okay, so, and so the focus on any schools that might be suffering a little bit because of lower performance on their accountability, obviously, those would be the ones that we target initially.
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say, it's just, you know, I feel like we've been talking about this for a while, and, and it's exciting to kind of see it all start to come to fruition and everything. And Dr. Markle, I think you're the perfect person to do all this, you're doing a great job. And so just excited to see how this all, you know, pans out and, good stuff.
One thing that is complicating, I don't know if complicating, it's just we're trying to, you know, Dr. Philly's done a great job within her first year of being president at UT Tyler. They are going through some change. They do have a, an opening at the dean of school of education. They actually split school of education and psychology. For other needs, psychology within, for the mental health of, of our area, is a separate need. We didn't need those two things to co-mingle. It also, I think, took up a lot of time as far as in capacity and energy of maybe the dean of that, that college over the school over there. So they just have a school of education dean that's open right now. And I think the timeline right there is a little bit uncertain. I don't think they'll do anything before Christmas, but that person needs to be identified and onboard for their end to really, really grasp what we're trying to do. I think we've got a good compass and they're, they're coming along. So kudos to their partnership. Glad that, glad that they're wanting to do this.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all that you do. What we've all been waiting for, preparing for the 2627 school year. What we've all been waiting for, preparing for the 26, 27 school year. The calendar, first reading.
Yes. This is always an exciting time of year because we start talking about the calendar for next year. It's one of Mr. Bergfeld's favorite things to discuss.
I lost control of it years ago, so.
Well, we always begin with the end in mind. Your teachers prefer, your staff prefers to have school complete by Memorial Day. And I think a lot of parents feel the same way as well. And so let's go through the year. Obviously, the, we start talking about August of 2026. We've got a lot of teacher training that actually come back on August the 3rd. The first day for staff is actually going, or for students is actually going to be on August 12th, this, this, in '26. Man, that seems awfully early. It's only the second week of school. A lot of it has to do because of Memorial Day and when Christmas is. You go through September, there's your Labor Day weekend right there on the 7th. Labor Day is on the 7th, so we'll have that day off. Get all the way to October, you actually have a somewhat of a, of a fall break. You have one day off designating the end of the nine weeks right there on October the 9th. All staff and students will be off. The students will also be off on October the 12th. That'll be a workday for your teachers. In November of 2026, that 20th date is an actual early release date, just like this coming Friday will be an early release day for our teachers and our staff. And then that, the full week, the full nine days, the 21st through the 29th will actually be Thanksgiving break. You get into December, you have an early release day on the 18th, and then you have a full, it looks like, man, it's a long time off right there. So from the, the 19th, which we include the weekends in Tyler ISD, all the way to the 3rd for the teacher, teaching staff and administrative staff and auxiliary staff. But then they also have a workday on the 4th. That is something that, that the teachers do enjoy. I've never understood it myself, but that is something that they, they request. While all of y'all go back to work on the 4th, they need to actually get prepared again for the next semester, even though we have an early release day that... But I digress on that and we actually negotiate and compromise that with our teaching staff. January, you come back, you've got Martin Luther King Day on the 18th. You get into February, you have a professional development day in that very, very short month. You get into March, March somehow, spring break fell into the second week of March. We've been trying to stay away from that because that is awfully early, but there is a reason behind that. For one, I think TJC and UT Tyler are considering actually taking that, that time off for their spring break. They used to match it up with us, but then they quit doing that. But because of our early college students, and along with our dual credit students, the comprehensive high schools, it creates a, almost a two-week break for those classes if we decide to not match up our time during that time. Ms. Hines, do you remember why also so early? Why second, why the second week of, of spring, of March for that spring break?
Well, because we have Good Friday. So if we moved it down a week, we would be back in four days and then y'all for three days.
That's correct. Okay. And maybe the colleges are seeing the same thing. I think that is a, probably a pretty good thing that we, we need to go to school. We need nine days of instruction before we take another day off, right? Okay. April, all the way through April, because Good Friday actually falls in March. And again, we take Good Friday off here in Tyler ISD. A dozen years ago, the superintendent was told, you better not take Good Friday off, even though it's a bad weather day. Well, if we had a bad weather day and we needed to go to school that day, I was going to be a scoundrel. So I said, if it's a man, if it's mandated to take Good Friday off, then we need to take Good Friday off and not try to play around with the weather. So April is all the way through, then we get to May. And then actually the 21st of May incredibly is the last day of school. It's, it's a full 10 days prior to Memorial Day. It's so strange how these calendars fall. We've actually also looked out into, to 2027. It's very similar as well. So, you know, as, as it would go along, just like we will this next spring, we'll try to see what the bad weather days look like and we'll try to make the safest decision we possibly can for our students and staff to go to school or to not go to school. And then we'll try to make up on the backend any type of bad weather days that we may have. That's pretty much your calendar to be considered for '26, '27. We'll bring it back to y'all after this first reading for adoption later on. I'll, I'll remind the board that policy allows the superintendent to adjust the calendar on the fly once it's adopted. Now, I won't do anything crazy on that, but that is giving the flexibility in making sure that we have the bad weather days covered if we need to not go to school on one of those days. That's why that policy's in place.
Any comments? As long as you don't mess with January 4th, we're good for educators, so.
Okay. There you go. Board President said that we shall take the 4th, it shall be a workday.
Workday.
Okay.
Okay, we are now going into... Y'all have something to say?
No, we're good, sorry.
Okay. We're now going into executive session and we'll see what we have when we come back.
Justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrison. We don't have anything coming out of executive session, so now it's time for our favorite part of the board meeting, special recognition.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Crawford. We want to begin the special recognition part of the meeting by announcing our November District Students of the Month. The Elementary Student of the Month is Talia Steele, a fifth grade student at Clarkston Elementary School. The Secondary Student of the Month is Sri Mandalim, a senior at Tyler Legacy High School and the Career and Technology Center. At this time, please join me in watching a brief video about these two outstanding students. The heart of our hometown beats strong in Tyler ISD where students are reaching goals, breaking barriers, and shaping the future. Their journeys may look different, but together they are showing us that next is now. Let's celebrate their achievements as we continue leading the way in Texas education. Let's take a moment to meet our Elementary Student of the Month for November.
My name is Talia and I am the District Student of the Month for November.
Talia is a dedicated fifth grader at Clarkston who plays an important leadership role on campus. As part of the morning announcement crew, she helps create and record daily broadcasts that keep students informed and inspired, always bringing creativity and teamwork to everything she does.
It's on Canva and like Ms. Smith, she like types it in for me for me to read and I put it on like my voice thing and I just say it. Sometimes I have to redo it because it just sounds horrible.
Through her work on the Student Lighthouse Team, Talia shares ideas, gives feedback, and helps plan events that strengthen the school community. Her positivity and commitment to helping others make her a shining example of leadership at Clarkston Elementary.
Every morning she greets the kids via a teams meeting and lets them know about the events for the day. She sends them reminders for the week and is just on top of all the things happening here at Clarkston. She works really hard in class. She's one of our top readers every week in iReady, our top mathematicians in iReady. She's just a great all-around kid and always wants to do what's best for herself and everyone at Clarkston.
Now let's recognize our District Secondary Student of the Month.
Hello, I'm Sri Manlim and I am the District Secondary Student of the Month for November.
Sri is an outstanding leader whose dedication and initiative set her apart. As DECA Chapter President at the CTC, she has worked tirelessly to strengthen the program, leading recruitment efforts and earning recognition as a 2024-2025 Texas DECA State Qualifier. Sri also completed a summer internship with Kelly Community Credit Union, which she'll continue through her practicum class next spring.
Going to all the conferences and leadership opportunities that DECA offers, it just helps you connect with people that are like-minded and have like same like goals as you. It just like helps your overall, you know, development for your career.
Her leadership extends beyond DECA as she transforms the professional dress closet into a formal club to support her peers' success. With a schedule full of AP and dual credit courses, Sri continues to excel academically while balancing her many commitments. She is a shining example of motivation, responsibility, and excellence.
She is laser focused on what she wants to accomplish. There's not a lot that can distract her from that at all. It's just a matter of, you know, she'll, she's good at asking questions to help get to her goal, but really for the most part, she figures it out and goes full steam ahead.
Let's honor these remarkable students as we celebrate the outstanding achievements happening across our district. Their success stories remind us of the strength, dedication, and spirit that define Tyler ISD. This recognition is proudly brought to you by Christus Trinity Mother Francis Health System, partners in supporting the bright future of our students and community. And if the board could join us down front? And first, we would like to welcome Talia to the front to receive the Elementary Student of the Month Award. Talia, come on down. Congratulations, Talia. Up next, we would like to welcome Sri to the front to receive the Secondary Student of the Month Award. Come on down. And let's give her one more round of applause. Now we would like to recognize our Elementary District Teacher of the Month, Misty Artmeyer from Jones Elementary School, and here are a few comments from her principal. Mrs. Artmeyer has shown outstanding dedication and consistency, achieving 100% perfect attendance during the first nine weeks. Mrs. Artmeyer embodies what it means to be a Tyler ISD educator, committed, passionate, and dependable. Her presence each day reflects her love for teaching, support for students, and contribution to our Jaguar vibe. She truly represents Jaguar pride and sets a shining example of excellence, teamwork, and dedication for our entire campus community. Come on down to receive your award. Let's give her one more round of applause. Our Secondary Teacher of the Month is Curtis Jenkins from the Career and Technology Center, and here are a few comments from his principal. Mr. Jenkins is an excellent teacher and great for students. He knows how to push each student to get the best out of them and is always encouraging them to take the next step. Mr. Jenkins is also helping a new teacher with the complicated NCCER certification for welding. He works daily with Raymond Williams to help students achieve this IBC. He has and is willing to try new and innovative ideas to lead students to success in the classroom and shop. Mr. Jenkins is a co-advisor of the Technology Student Association, CTSO, and has taken on this additional responsibility and is helping to coach students through regional and state competitions. Let's give him a round of applause as you come on down. Okay. Congratulations, and that wraps up our special recognitions for this evening.
We'll give them a few minutes to exit, to exit. Okay, we're now up to continuous improvement student outcomes, CLI engage update.
Providing the presentation tonight is Ms. Gina Dykman and Dr. James Kurton. Both of them serve as executive directors in supervision schools and with data and analysis. CLI engages for pre-K Head Start, the younger kiddos. We measure them because in the, a long time ago, in what seems like a galaxy far, far away, we didn't measure this type of stuff. We just kind of went and opened up our school door, school doors and played school. Now we focus on instructional proficiency and how that leads to learning outcomes, improved learning outcomes. So Ms. Dykman, Dr. Kurton.
All right. Well, good evening, Ms. Atkins, Dr. Crawford, and Board of Trustees. We're excited to go through the beginning of the year data tonight, and we'll kind of give you an update on where things, where things are looking. So just as Dr. Crawford said, this is our pre-K, our Head Start assessment. All of our pre-K and Head Start students get assessed on this by the teacher. We assess three times per year with a benchmark, and then we started last year, we're going to continue it this year with twice a year progress monitoring. So in between the beginning and middle of the year and our middle and end of the year benchmarks, we will give a subset of these assessments to try to make sure students are progressing in the right direction before we get to that, that mid, mid and end of the year benchmark. The teacher does this assessment one-on-one with the student, so it's not a computer-based program where the student jumps on and completes the assessment. You can see where we were last year. So the prior BOI is last year, the current BOI or beginning of year is this year. And you'll see we're about the same or improved in every area. So just a reminder, these are not cohort. These are two different groups of students. And this year, we really, it says a writing rubric, we really are implementing a writing rubric and a social-emotional rubric to try to get more consistency in those two skills because they are, within the program, they are a little bit more subjective than the rest of the four, four skills. Here's a breakdown of those same six skills and how they look overall versus with our pre-K tuition, our pre-K non-tuition, and our Head Start students. You can see our pre-K non-tuition, our Head Start students started about the same level in most, most of our skills that we assess. And then here's a breakdown by demographic for all six of the same skills. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Newsom?
Well, first off, right off, of course, I noticed the social and emotional because we've been having problems with that. So what did we do different than what we've been doing in the past to get better results? Because our results is significantly different than the previous years.
I think, let me, let me just preface this. Since this is beginning of the year and it's a completely different set of subset of kids from last year, we haven't had a whole lot of influence as far as those numbers go. This is a baseline grab that was proctored when? This was proctored in Sep-
First week of September.
First week of September. So I think that's probably the most important thing is it just, it just, the differences in the, between students and groups of students that we get from year to year that come into our, in our Head Start and our pre-K programs at the beginning of the year. So we're not taking, taking credit for any of this data. This, this is, this presentation is the beginning of the year for our very earliest, youngest, almost first-time students. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
But, you know, we were in single digits and extremely low, maybe twenties with this skill. And that's, that's what I'm saying. We're in the seventies now, so there has to be something that was different other than just-
They talked about rubric. They talked about rubric.
Okay.
A little different, it's not as subjective. Is that one thing that's, that could be different?
That could be. I'm trying to recall, I would have to go back and look at our prior year. I think social-emotional's been pretty flat.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll look at, we'll take a look at it and make sure we're not, not off-base there. But it absolutely should be more objective this year moving forward.
And that may be it, but like it has been, that's, go back and look at the data. So because there was a big difference in the improvement. I noticed it right off because that was the really, at this level, that was the only one I had any concern about. So that, that's why it stood out to me in regards to it.
It's a good, it's a good wonder, especially over the last five years as we're starting to see kind of society open back up a little bit more from, you know, these kiddos were probably born either during COVID or just right after COVID. You'd have had some of the other, maybe the, some of these other, other cohorts that have come through were in their early stages during the COVID shutdowns and a lot of the other issues. I mean, there's, there's probably some, some validity behind that.
With us using the rubric to score them so early in the year, it's cooperation skills, you know, ability to relate to their peers and get along with, respond to adult redirections. So a lot of those soft skills. So as we progress through the year and a little bit more demand is on them, sometimes those scores change a little bit, but it is going to be better with a more objective rubric.
Well, I'm not complaining. I'm proud to see the numbers come up, but there was a significant increase.
Yes, sir. And, and maybe that's, maybe that's a sign that, that we've got some things that are working externally, that's going to give our kids a chance academically, you know, that are working at home, around the dinner table, within our churches, within our community. I mean, that's, we can't probably put a finger on that. Yeah.
That's the last thing. Thank you, Madam President. If I'm reading this right, on your breakdown of students, I think it's your third slide with the overall pre-K, non-paid tuition, and then the Head Start. It looks to me like your highest, and this is new set of kids, obviously a baseline type of assessment, I would think, because it's beginning of the year, but it's almost level of affluence. I mean, that's your highest scoring. I would, if I'm wrong, tell me the ones that can afford the paid-for pre-K tuition, because it's not super expensive, but it's a little bit of a bite, four or 500 bucks a month, I think. Look at their scores. Am I reading that wrong? That it's, the parents probably come, they probably come from an affluent household?
I think, I think that, again, I mean, we've even debated about, well, how do we show that pre-K tuition portion right there? We've had some internal discussions about that because there is a certainly, and it is advantageous if you come from a different, maybe a higher economically stable position in your household. You're exposed to different academic settings as you're coming through your preschool years, not your pre-K, but your preschool years. We know that. And so, yeah, I think you're, you're identifying the data that's there and the, it kind of projects on into the gap closures that we're trying to attack every year as we go all the way through their senior and high school. So yes, sir, this is where they're starting off, probably has some economic influence. It does have some economic influence.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good thing that you have it there. I wouldn't hide from not having it there because it, it lets us know that what's going on in those households when they first give them to us, they're already that far ahead. I don't want to make that sound in a bad way. They're getting a lot of supplement. The education is starting at home.
That's right.
Whether it be through a tutor program or mom and daddy reading to them or whatever. I, I thought that was neat and intuitively I thought to point out. But then the other one, your next slide on the breakdown by the demos, do you attribute any of this? Because Hispanic overall in our school district, we've had discussions about this, are doing pretty well. I mean, that's your biggest subpopulation. They're moving the needle pretty well on it. But on one, two, three, four of these, they are being outscored by their white counterparts, and even to a certain degree, their African-American counterparts. Do you attribute any of that, whether it's rapid letter naming, rapid vocabulary, or the psychological awareness to either a language barrier or a cultural barrier? Have you picked up any of that?
Yes, for sure. We noticed that as students are immersed in school and in language, their acquisition increases and the Hispanic scores jump the most, the fastest.
So you'll see this cohort next year where you'll see a great increase in that because now they've been immersed in the language and starting to offset some of that.
That's correct.
And just to add to that, there is an English and a Spanish version. So they will, some students will assess, like at Burwell, they will usually assess in Spanish, right? And so it, it will depend on the assessment, but it's not uncommon to see that population really move the needle pretty significantly between beginning, middle, and end of the year.
Just in general, in observing, and you're talking about demographics, you know, I've noticed that Hispanics tend to excel the African-Americans as they get higher in the grades. So, you know, they may start behind, maybe due to a language barrier or something economically, but they do accelerate much faster than African-Americans. So I think that that's significant in the aspect of looking to see maybe what are some of the external factors that contribute to that because they're both in the same system.
Yep. The, the word gap is real, and I don't, I used to have that off the top of my head about how, it's, it's in the millions of, of kids that come from means versus kids that come from an economically disadvantaged situation and that the, the word exposure that they get, and the quality word exposure that they get as well. You know, are they, and again, it may not be any fault of the household. Parents may be having to work two jobs just to make ends meet. And so what, what is effectively developing these kids? Is it, is it an iPad? Is it a tablet? Is it, is it a TV? Is it other external influences that are not appropriate? There's certainly, that is, that is part of it. And, and I think that's, it's attributed here, whether it be a language barrier from their native language or what's being spoken in their house, to maybe external factors of what's, what's, you know, what's raising our kids? Is it, is it a phone? Is it a tablet? Or is it actual other experiences like going to the zoo or things like that before they ever get to us?
I know when, when we sign up a kiddo to go to school, pre-K or Head Start, in that signup paperwork, you say, you know, Jose, and then it asks you, where did they go to school before here, if they went to school? And it actually says, you can, you can list like daycares, like Trinity Lutheran or, or any daycare, XYZ daycare. So we get that data. Have we ever compiled that and said, you know, a lot of the kids that we get that are fluent come from this type of background as far as education, whether it be Christian, non-Christian? I know there's even a dual immersion daycare. What's it called, Sue? A ton of kids over in South Tyler that-
What's it called, Mills? Next up.
Okay. So I wonder, I know we're getting that data, but have we ever looked at it and said, we got 500 kids from XYZ daycare and they're really doing well?
So we've talked a lot about the summer slide with you guys and trying to push back on that. And so this summer, we were pretty proactive, as you may recall, and we actually went to the daycares, got the kids on a bus, brought them back to Tyler ISD, and we did literacy and math instruction with them and then got them back to their daycares so they wouldn't miss their free lunch. And so we have some partnerships that we're working on that close the gaps however we can think of and just trying to think outside the box to increase learning for all the kids.
We do grab that information, and I'm, I don't know what we use it for, to be honest with you. Full disclosure and transparency, Kevin, you're man in the helm tonight. You run that registration process. When we asked that question, you remember when you set that up, what that, what that was actually for?
More of an analysis, application by application principally for Head Start. I'm not sure what they were doing with it, but I've never had a request to try to compile that as meaningful data.
Yeah.
More of an examination of each application.
Yeah.
Just intuitively, it would lead me to believe that if you took a kid, a group of kids that say had been in a daycare, and I'm using Trinity Lutheran just because my kids went there, for, four years before they even came to us, they've already started learning ABCs and 1 through 3s and Jesus stories and all kinds of other stuff. I think when you get those kids from any daycare, they're going to probably be at a higher level than the ones that have been at home with mom and dad or grandma. And we, what are they, last year you can get in what, five, six years old?
Yeah.
I would think that already intuitively be, have you seen that?
Our principals do a good job of when they're drafting each grade level, that they're not loading up on, on one proficiency versus a deficiency in that, inside of those classrooms as far as like if you're building your, your pre-K class or you're building your kindergarten and then first grade, second grade, then I know they get their teachers get together and they kind of make sure that, for one, the challenges are shared, that you're putting your better teachers where they're needed the most, or maybe the ones that perform a little bit better, that are not novice. So I do think that, I do know that our, our teachers grab that data. I'm not sure about the pre-K classrooms, about whether or not where they go, where they go to preschool.
Yeah.
I don't know how, if they're constructing them in that way, but I'm sure that our principals are smart enough to figure that out. But that's something we can figure. Dr. Groppel, you can probably get that information to see amongst your elementary schools, which ones actually use, how they use that data. They may not use it at all. But I do know as they progress through grade one to two to three to four to five, they are making sure that they're putting those classrooms together so they can be as successful as possible. So might be another data piece. And we may want to consider adding some more of the preschool options that are out there. It's a very limited list. I know what you're talking about. Did your child go to any of these preschool experiences? Green Acres is on there. Is Trinity Lutheran open?
I think so.
Okay. And I think North Tyler might be on there as well. But it's very limited. It's not very long. So we might need to go and do a little expansion on that and use that as, see if there's some data that can be used there for us to be a little bit more prepared for these kiddos.
Anyone else? Thank you so very much. We're now to business, legal, finance, consent agenda. I know we have to pull C. Are there any other items that you guys would like for us to pull?
H, please.
Anybody else? You want me to go? That's it. So could I get a motion on A, B, D, E, F, G?
I approve, I move that we approve everything except C and H.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Let's pull C, gifts and donations.
Yeah, page 17 of your agenda packet, Andy Woods PTA. We're so appreciative of what they do for our kids there. We've got a lot of examples of this across our, across our school system amongst our PTAs. They raised $11,400 for the Andy Woods Elementary School. Physical Education, skating experience. If you haven't seen that, I know we've had a trustee or two actually go through that. We've seen some administrators go and help kids skate even this year. It's pretty cool from everything they do at Andy Woods. We love that experience over there. I'm sure you'll get another gifts and donations come across your way for their indoor golfing experience, putt-putt experience that they normally do. So here we are, $11,400 from Andy Woods PTA.
PTA, all right. Got to get a motion?
I move we approve the wonderful $11,400 for the Andy Woods Elementary skating program.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Let's talk about H.
H is resolution casting votes to appoint candidates to serve as members of Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. In your background information in their Senate Bill Two from the 88th legislative session, man, it was, it was the 88th, actually transformed what your appraisal board of directors is made up of. In other words, in, in the, in the past years, it was just taxing jurisdictions, appointed members. Now it's a blending of such to where you actually have the board consisting of nine members. Five members are appointed by taxing units, three members are then elected in a general election, and then one tax assessor collector as ex officio member. That's Mr. Barber, Gary Barber. So up tonight, you have, these are not our appointees. These are actually the slots that are made up of, I think, the city and the county. These are actually the slots that are made up of, I think the city and the county and yes, city and county appointees that were originally, and that is Mark Watley, former city councilman, and James Sheridan, who actually works for Southside Bank, former president of Tyler Area Chamber of Commerce. And so we're pulling this today so that we can actually allocate, the board can actually allocate and, and figure out how you want to split your votes on this. And that's on page- 30. The, the resolution's there, I'm looking for 30.
We're just approving the resolution?
So, question. I'm confused. I don't know if anybody else feels. You said split our votes, are we voting for the individuals here or?
You're actually allocating your 293 votes-
293 votes.
To two candidates.
Are we doing that right now?
Or one. Right now. This is your baby. Annie Dwyer is another nominee, but she has actually decided she's moving so she can, will not be able to serve.
Okay. So can we split the 293 between James Sheridan and Mark Watley?
It's, well, it's whether or not you want to give all of your votes to, you might want to just give one to James Sheridan.
Are we the only ones voting for these people or county and, and city?
They are, every taxing jurisdiction in Smith County is voting-
Okay, for these three people. Okay. But we have 293 votes that we can utilize for these two.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are two spots. Yes, sir.
And we get 293 votes that matter.
As the largest taxing jurisdiction in Smith County, you get 293 votes to distribute as you see fit. If there was 10 people on there-
Can divide by 10 or we can divide by 2?
Yeah.
Give all to one or?
I'd say half and half.
Your, your current representation on the appraisal district, I think is up in two years and that right now is Reverend Orenthia Mason and Wolf, Jonathan Wolf. That's correct. Mark Laredo formerly was on there, but he's actually moved to the Metroplex and we only get two slots now.
So. You ready?
Administrative recommendation is that you split your votes.
That's what I was gonna say. I, I have a recommendation.
If you need any type of propulsion to, to make a vote.
I have, I have a recommendation that we split our votes basically going 146, I guess, to James Sheridan and 147 to, to Mark Watley.
We could give one vote to Annie.
146 and 147.
She's gone.
Her name's on the ballot.
We're not wasting.
Oh, you want to give that one?
Not wasting votes.
Every vote counts, Mr. Levers.
My motion stands.
Well, I'm sorry. I didn't get to- Let's do the one extra to Mark Watley, who is, I mean, he's a commercial real estate agent.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's kind of been that arena.
If, if Mr. Sheridan wants y'all's extra vote, the next time, he's going to have to prove it, right?
Yeah.
So what do we have?
Got a motion by Mr. Newsom and a second by Mr. Levers.
They still trying to figure out what they get.
I'm sorry, Levers.
145 on one, right?
140, 146 on one or 147 on the other. Right. I can do a little math.
Star math practice right here.
Redo your motion, please.
I, I move it.
I move that we give 146 to James Sheridan and 147 to Mark Watley as our votes from the district.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Good job, good job, board. Of course, if they redesign all, anything and everything in regard to ad valorem taxes, this may be a moot point down the road. After the, after the 99th legislative session.
Okay. Now we on consent agenda for A, approval of the clinic affiliation. Anybody want to talk about that discussion? No, Cody? You sure? Okay. Could I get a motion then?
I move we approve the curriculum and consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, superintendent's staff report, safety and security update.
Yep, this is one we typically provide in a public setting. I mean, we, we do provide in a public setting, but Agent Jeff Millsleyal, that runs our safety and security shop, will provide you your, your semester safety and security update. Agent Millsleyal, the table is yours, sir.
Hello.
All right. President Atkins, Board, Dr. Crawford, this is your update for safety and security. We're going to start out with my favorite subject, T E A, safety and security. Back in August, they required all behavioral threat assessment team members to be trained. At the time, it was eight hours and we have hundreds at our campuses in our district. And it's one time, one time only, but it filled up. So I got with the Region Seven last week and they've agreed to come train us March the 3rd. In the meantime, they can still sign up through the school safety center and it's only six hours this time. So by the time they come for the audit, the week after spring break, we'll be 100%. No ifs, ands or buts about that. Our intruder audits, we've been doing this for three years. We're still at 100%. We've had 10 done this year and we'll have three more coming up the first week in December. As far as the school safety center goes, had to redo the EOP plan as we do every year and they added the active threat for schools. And last year, it took them all the way until July of this year to approve it. They were so far behind, but I'm happy to report it was done in less than 30 days. So they're, they're really improving in that area. One of the things they also required us to do is do standard response protocol for all of our substitute teachers, auxiliary employees and campuses. And kudos to Bill Melrose sitting in the back in Destry. We've trained every single substitute, which is a huge finding, and all the campuses. So they get together and we have one upcoming next, the week after next. So also the first week in December. Now for the good news. We got it. Okay. On Thursday, Tax Dot approved the light at the Loop and Tyler High to the tune of $808,000 with no participation because we received transportation credits that saved the district $162,000. That is my presentation.
All right. You ended on a good note.
And thank you to the board and everybody that wrote letters. I'll probably have to come back to you once this all gets approved. I had the minutes that came in at four o'clock today, so I'll do a resolution accepting that. And then it's subject to whenever Tax Dot gets started. I can also tell you there were $275 million was awarded, over $1 billion was requested. So we also got another one here in Tyler, UT Tyler and Longview. Those are the only ones in the Tax Dot region that received it this year. So it's been a four-year project.
Right. I was just going to say, I want to thank you for your persistence and being in there and kept pushing for that particular project. I think it, it was very well needed and I think it is appreciated.
Thank you.
Ribbon cutting for Mr. Newsom.
There you go.
Got to name that, 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 that's right. Adopt a highway. There you go. That's, that is good. That's something's been needed, right? Okay.
Will that help us with the police officers having to be staggered, you know, in front of the campus on the, because it's in front of Tyler High, right? You know how they got two police officers now? Is that going to help us with that? Because I assume that's what they're there for, right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we got those, that portable signage, which those were good investments anyways. We can put them anywhere we need to. But yeah, we had to, whenever no one would work with us, we kind of had to create our own school safety zone, so.
Good, good job.
Thanks.
You can add that to create your own school, teachers, create your own safety.
There you go.
Anybody else? We appreciate you so very much and all that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you and have a good evening.
Okay, discussion of Tasby things and local policies.
The post-89th legislative session policy update is upon us. Here we are with the first reading. Y'all take a look at those whenever you really want to get in there. We, we've really scoured and redlined and blued and changed some terminology within our local policies that fit Tyler. Always trying to make sure Tasby's not sliding in some things that we once eradicated out, out of our, out of our policies. But thanks to section 28.0043 of the Texas Education Code, which I am extremely familiar with now over the past week. It looks like finally Tasby doesn't, doesn't have any wiggle room to go in and change some of those policies that may be impacted by section 28.0043 of the Texas Education Code. So y'all take a look at these. If you've got any questions about this, be sure to contact myself. Dr. Groppel's shop, along with Trina, his assistant, manages the, the, the actual policies for us, but Ms. Orr and I also take a look at them as well.
Okay. Any comments? Future business. Don't clap too loud. November 24th through 28th is Thanksgiving and we have a lot to be thankful for. Then our regular meeting will take place December the 15th. Could I get a motion? All in favor? Anybody opposed? Meeting adjourned. Have a blessed week.